Good morning Birmingham. Today is Tuesday, October 24th. The time is 9:31 a.m. I call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today's invocation will be led by Bishop Gregory Mullin, Senior Pastor of Abraham Nest of Love Christian Church. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Counselor J.T. Moore. At this time, if you're willing and able, please stand and join us.
Let us pray. Dear God, our Father, we bow before you to say thank you for another day, another opportunity to call on your name. God, we pray now that you would allow your Holy Spirit to convene in this meeting with us. And God, we pray for our leadership of this city, our mayor, our council, our staff, God of this city. And we pray right now that you would allow their agenda to be your agenda. And everything that is done is done for the betterment of this city. God, we pray for the great city of Birmingham, that you would allow Birmingham to continue to rise to the occasion, to stand therefore as a light, a city that is set on a hill. Father God, we pray right now that you would allow all of us to just be of one mind, one spirit, one body. And therefore, God, we can accomplish all things that need to be accomplished. And God, the outcome, and we know that in the outcome, you will get the glory of all things. So for that, God, we say thank you. Thank you, God, for this leadership. Thank you for this council. God, we just give you glory for it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Stand as Luke pled. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Thank you Bishop Mullin for that prayer. We appreciate you. This time, Mr. Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Counselor member, at it. Counselor member Clark.
Present.
Counselor member Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning. Counselor member O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning. Counselor member Tate.
Good morning.
Good morning. Counselor member Williams.
Good morning.
Morning, sir. Counselor member Woods.
Good morning.
Counselor President Pro Tem Smitherman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Counselor President Alexander.
Present. Thank you very much. Counselors, at this time, without objection, if you would allow us to continue with the minutes and the communications from the mayor before taking on item number one. Thank you. At this time, minutes are not ready from June 20th, 2023 through October 17th, 2023. Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Is he here yet? Oh, good morning. Wrong side.
Madam President, I did that to you first. Good morning to you. Good morning to the entire council.
Good morning to the public.
Madam President and council, our city lost a true servant leader, an advocate for our people last week. On behalf of the city of Birmingham, we send our sincerest condolences to the family and loved ones of Wadarius Hill. His many contributions to our community, including his fierce devotion to education, will never be forgotten. And if it's okay with you, Madam President and council, at this time of the light, for us to have a moment of silence in memory of Wadarius Hill. Thank you. Madam President and council, as you know, last week, we revealed a mural in City Hall celebrating breast cancer fighters, survivors, and thrivers. And so, in honor of breast cancer wearers, the city of Birmingham collaborated with the West End Basin Women's Organization to shine a spotlight on the strength and resilience of our city's breast cancer fighters. Titled "Women on the Journey", is a stunning mural commissioned by Virtue Inc. and created by visual artist Jamie Bonfiglio. The piece depicts women of all backgrounds, faiths, ages, and stages of life who have been impacted by breast cancer. And it is on display on the second floor of City Hall now through Friday, December 1st. And I want to encourage you all, as well as all of our citizens, to please check it out. As we all know, this week, the Magic City Classic is here and is upon us. The 82nd Annual Magic City Classic, as you know, is the largest HBCU football game in the country. The game will take place this Saturday, October 28th, at Legion Field. Festivities surrounding the game include the classic kickoff, the Magic City Classic parade, the tailgate party, and the famed halftime show performed by the mighty marching Hornets, as well as the marching maroon and white. This Friday, October 27th, some of your favorite food trucks and vendors will be here at City Hall during the classic food truck block party from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. And for those who are still interested in going and have not purchased their ticket, you can get your tickets at the game at the magiccityclassic.com. I want to repeat that. That's magiccityclassic.com. N.O.D. Also, you can stay connected with all the things classic, including the game day shuttle locations, times events, and more by visiting birminghamal.gov/classic. And yes, Madam President and council, everything cannot be free. Support those two institutions. Buy a ticket. Y'all know I'm free. All right, Madam President and council, the city of Birmingham is seeking candidates for our real-time crime center specialist position. This is a non-sworn position, so this is civilian position. Specialists are responsible for monitoring the security camera systems throughout the city to serve as a resource to law enforcement investigations. This is a grade 17, step 7 position. And the starting salary is 50K. And we want to encourage those who have any interest in this or have the skill to go to jobsquest.org for details and apply. I'll be sure to send you all something via text so you can get it out to those who you think may have interest as well. As you know, this is the last phase of the uniformed cart delivery. And so, for single-family residents receiving a uniform garbage cart since September 13th, letters now have been delivered and the new once-a-week schedule has begun. It began yesterday, actually. This handles the final phase of deliveries for the complimentary uniform garbage carts. All single-family residents are now under the same system. This has been a big change, as you know. And it's been a transition process and it's been in phases. I know for any of us, human nature, change is hard. Sometimes we resist change. But overall, this is a more efficient process that makes way for us to engage our citizens better. One, two, to make our city cleaner. And three, to keep our employees safe. And so, with this ups and downs and its phases and transitions, and trust me, we're still in this last phase. There'll be a little, there'll be some more bumps. But we anticipate by 2024 that this will have been a smooth, a smooth process going forward. I want to thank the council for their patience. I want to thank the, I also want to thank the council for supporting this effort. And it's been a long time coming. But also, I want to thank the public for their patience as well. And please continue to communicate with us if you have any issues. And we'll continue to communicate with the public. And we also want to encourage those who need information to go to birminghamal.gov/pickup for more information related to this. The same goes for bulk trash as it relates to online updates. And at this time, Madam President and council, I would like to ask James Sutton and Counselor Pro Tem Crystal Smitherman to join me at the podium. And as they come up, this conversation that we are about to participate in, it relates to Careers in Construction Month. I'm gonna turn it over to your colleague in a minute. But before I do, I want to say a few things about Build Up and the great job Mr. Sutton and his team is doing on behalf of all these young people, three of which are present today. Build Up Community School was founded in 2018. It is a private workforce development high school in Tittusfield, that's north Tittusfield, by the way, with the mission to empower youth, empower families and communities to lift themselves out of poverty and lead self-sufficient lives to acquire a self-directed, career-focused education, gain knowledge and skills in high-demand fields of their choice, and own homes to build personal wealth and lead long-term neighborhood revitalization efforts. To be clear, my favorite part is building of their own homes. And so, today, we celebrate the work their staff, teachers, and students are doing in our community during Careers in Construction Month. And we have a special proclamation in part, but before I read it, I do want Madam Pro Tem to say something. She has a lot of amazing things going on in her district, but I imagine she'll share with you. This is one of the most prized efforts that's going on.
Thank you, Mayor Woodfin. Good morning to Madam President, to my wonderful colleagues, and to the public. Build Up, it's been such an honor partnering with you all since I came into office in 2019. And Mayor Woodfin is correct. That's one of the most amazing things. I think about a year or two, they featured a young man who went through the Build Up program, was able to build a house and be able to move into it. And that's amazing at 19 years old. I don't know about you guys, but I own my own home at 30 years old. So I went to Career Day and Mr. Sutton and I were talking about the different type of careers you can do with construction, right? Things that kids don't think about. We were talking about in theater, in Broadway, you can, somebody has to build the stage up, for example. Or there are different other careers that we had talked about that I was like, wow, I didn't even think about you could do that. So thank you for always providing that opportunity for our kids. You all are so amazing. I know I talked to you, I forgot your name, I forgot to you. And he was just amazing. He was asking all these questions, like what does a council do, et cetera, et cetera. So I think you guys are doing amazing work. Thank you for taking in those kids who may need a little bit more attention and really can use their hands. So I believe this is start of generational wealth. And also, Build Up has built so many amazing homes in District 6. So it's such a blessing to have you there and congratulations again.
So, Madam President and council, I want to read this proclamation in part on behalf of the mayor's office and Madam Pro Tem. And it states, whereas Careers in Construction Month is an annual month designated to help increase public awareness of the opportunities available in construction trades professions. During this month, employers, associations, and schools are encouraged to conduct job fairs, panel discussions, and local community events to inform students of the vast employment opportunities in construction. The construction industry is one of our nation's largest industries, employing more than 5 million individuals in the U.S. And whereas Build Up Community School has been a collaborative partner with local government and community stakeholders to rehab blighted houses to become habitable, single-family homes and support high school students with job, jobs and life skills necessary to address chronic labor shortages and misperceptions of careers in construction in order to make long-term transformational impact on the city of Birmingham. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, along with Crystal Smitherman, Pro Tem of the Birmingham City Council, and the entire Birmingham City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Careers in Construction Month in the city of Birmingham, and urge all residents to join me in this special observance. And one more thing before Madam Pro Tem and I leave, and that is for Mr. Sutton to say a few words in regards to their program.
Thank you so, so much, Mayor. And first of all, congratulations on your recent nuptials. Welcome to the club. Thank you also, Madam President and Pro Tem, for your consistent, continued support. Anytime we call, you're there, you're present, and we certainly appreciate that. Our school and students know that from both of you, that they see you and they know that you support us. And to all of you, thank you so much for your support as well. So many of you, we've had, we've had personal conversations and you've been to our campus and our school. So we are supremely grateful for your support. I do want to introduce three products of your support. Jonathan Andrews, who's a senior, who you may have recently seen on NBC 13. Was that your first interview? Awesome. Won't be your last. The rock star right here in the middle. Our girls have increased 39% at Build Up this year. Ms. Erica Perriman White, you're gonna be hearing and reading about her more. And right on the end, my brother Stan Tress Pickens, who has the highest GPA in the school, who's also a senior and I believe is going down the pathway of plumbing. Absolutely. So for all your plumbing needs, please reach out to Pickens Plumbing. Thank you so, so much for this opportunity and for recognizing us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President and council. At this time, I would like another one of your colleagues to come up, and that is Counselor J.T. Moore. Madam President and council, as he comes forth. If you did not know, we are here to acknowledge, celebrate National Association of Real Estate Brokers. At this time, I want to step aside and to ask Counselor Moore to actually lead in this recognition process.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. At this time, I'll ask that everyone from the National Association of Real Estate Brokers come on up. And as they make their way up, I think a lot of us know that, you know, in this country, one of the quickest ways and most common ways to build wealth is through investing in real estate. And so, today, we just want to, you know, take this opportunity to honor the National Association of Real Estate Brokers for their upcoming conference, the NARAB Black Wealth Tour in Birmingham that will be taking place at Miles. It's a lot of great information that will be shared. And I'll kind of let, you know, Dr. Courtney Rose talk about it. But I'll read this resolution in part. Whereas the National Association of Real Estate Brokers has embarked on its Building Black Wealth Tour, an initiative aimed at promoting homeownership and economic prosperity within black, black communities across the nation. The Council of the City of Birmingham extends hearty congratulations to the men and women who make up their premier network of black real estate professionals on their launch of a 60-city Building Black Wealth Tour where Birmingham is the second stop. Whereas during the tour, NARAB will release the State of Housing in Black America Report at Miles College with the goal and mission of democracy and housing. NARAB has 12 original founders. One of those original 12, Mr. W.H. Hollins, was from Birmingham. And whereas the NARAB Building Black Wealth Tour is a drive to highlight the vast racial discrepancies in wealth across America, our vibrant and welcoming city has been chosen as one of the key stops on the tour, recognizing Birmingham's commitment in fostering diversity, equity, education, and economic growth. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurrent, pauses in its deliberations to extend a warm and enthusiastic welcome to the National Association of Real Estate Brokers and its Building Black Wealth Tour, recognizing their dedication to advancing the cause of black wealth building and equitable homeownership, presented this 24th day of October 2023 at the recommendation of Counselor J.T. Moore. And so, at this time, I would love for Dr. Courtney Rose to come on up and speak.
Good morning. On behalf of the National Association of Real Estate Brokers, we want to thank the city of Birmingham. We want to thank Counselor, Counselor Member Moore. We want to thank Mayor Woodfin. This has been such a wonderful experience for our historic organization to partner with this historic city. We were founded in 1947, before African-Americans could become Realtors. Our founders started the Realtist. And the Realtists have been focused on the black community and building wealth through our community for the past 76 years. We will be here November 7th through 11th for our Black Wealth Summit. That will include the State of Housing in Black America. We will release our report that shows the data of where we are as the black community in housing across this country. We will bring in economists, scholars, to be able to share with us how do we increase the black wealth in our community. We will also host our national board, board meeting. We have over 200 members that will travel from across the country to be here in Birmingham. And then on Saturday is our culminating event, which is the Building Black Wealth Tour, that we're focused on educating and inspiring the black community to homeownership. We will host that at the Star Church with Pastor Beavers, along with the mayor. We are so excited to bring this historic event again to this historic city. Thank you all so much for the warm welcome that you have given us. And the Realtists are looking forward to being here November 7th through 11th. Thank you.
Move for you, see?
By saying aye. All opposed, say nay.
Move the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Madam President and council, thank you for being patient with us this morning. We have one more important note. Last, but certainly not, certainly not least, as a matter of fact, the first. Yeah, let me just go ahead and get into it. At this time, Madam President, can you please step down? As well as Ms. Pauline Parker, can you please step up? And please bring all the lovely ladies of Alpha, Capella, Alpha Sorority Incorporated with you, of the Omicron Omega Chapter, and all AKAs, as a matter of fact. As you, as you see, Madam President and council, the K's roll deep as they continue to come forward. Today is a special day. Madam President and council, we honor the women of AKAs. 99 years ago today, all right, so I want to repeat that, 99 years ago today, the Omicron Omega Chapter of Alpha Capella Alpha Sorority Incorporated received its charter, becoming the 15th chapter of AKAs and the first graduate chapter to be chartered in southeastern region. The chapter's membership has included hundreds of professional women who are dedicated public servants and graduates of numerous accredited colleges and universities throughout the United States. And so, in honor of them, and all the ladies of AKAs, I will read a proclamation in part. And then I will turn it over to Madam President. And then she'll probably turn it over to Ms., Madam President. And it states, whereas since its inception, Omicron Omega Chapter has consistently strived to do things that are worthwhile. The chapter has worked hard in the greater Birmingham metropolitan community for more than 99 years. Omicron Omega has a rich and storied legacy of serving all mankind. The chapter awards more than 20,000 annually in scholarships to high school and college students, makes various contributions to charitable organizations, and continually provides
There's nothing to stop here.
volunteer services throughout the community. It's all good, brother. He's trying to record y'all. And whereas Alpha Capella Alpha Sorority Incorporated had its humble beginnings as the vision of nine college students on the campus of Howard University in 1908, since then, the sorority has flourished into a globally impactful organization of nearly 355,000 college-trained members, bound by the bonds of sisterhood and empowered by a commitment to servant leadership that is both domestic and international in its scope. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, along with Wardine Alexander, President of the Birmingham City Council, and the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, as AKAs Day. Here at City Hall, and I encourage all employees to recognize the selfless service of the organization and its members. And before Ms. Parker speaks, I would like Ms. Alexander to speak. And while they're doing that, I'm gonna go get a pink handkerchief. I'll be back.
Well, thank you, Mayor Woodfin, and thank you to my fellow members of the council, and thank you to all of the members of the sisterhood of Alpha Capella Alpha Sorority Incorporated. It is just an extreme honor and pleasure to serve with these sisters as we go out through the community to do our community service. As Omicron Omega was my initiating chapter 42 years ago, so that's been a long time to serve the community. And so, I'm just, again, excited. I'll turn it over to our president, Pauline Parker.
Good morning to the Honorable Mayor Randall Woodfin, to the Counsel President, Wardine Alexander, and to the esteemed members of Birmingham City Council. I am Pauline Parker, the President of Omicron Omega Chapter. And I, alone with the 380 members of Omicron Omega Chapter, which you can see, I have seven here supporting us. And that's what we do in the greater Birmingham area. We are all excited today, as you have heard, today. 10:24 is our actual chartering date. And so, we are excited. We are thankful for you over the past years, serving and helping us through our efforts to serve the greater Birmingham area. So we know that if today we are celebrating, we know what's going to happen tonight at 12:01 when we are into our centennial. We are going to be We are going to be planning all year long, so we ask each of you to come and support us and, uh, be present at our events. Again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve in the greater Birmingham area.
So, you know, everybody, I, I was gonna take Chief Sparks' pink handkerchief. I decided not to. It's okay, I may, I may try to borrow it for the picture. Alright, two things. Madam President and Council, then we're gonna get out of everybody's way. One, um, everybody, we're gonna stand here and get this photo, so he's gonna, everybody's just gonna look this way in a minute. Two, DJ, when we get done, play the music so they can stroll.
Wait now, if you got a gift for them, you got a gift for the Delta Sioux, okay?
That's a, it's a joke. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Carol, I cannot stand here and leave without acknowledging you, because we are in your district, and thank you for everything that you have done for us, and we look forward to the things that you will be doing for us. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Woodfin, for those presentations this morning and your communications. Mr. Clerk, if you'll call the items that are consented for consent.
Uh, our consent agenda starts on page two with items three. Five, six, seven.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
They can't hear you, clerk.
I'm sorry. The consent agenda starts on page two with item, item three. Then we have items, um, should remove item four. No, we just need to make corrections, I'll come back to it, I'm sorry. Item four is on consent, item five, item six, item seven, page sixteen, items eight, nine, and ten are on consent. Page seventeen, we have items eleven, twelve, and thirteen on consent. Um, we need to remove fourteen from consent, it's just a notice instead of a resolution. That's item fourteen. Page eighteen, we need to withdraw sixteen. Uh, item seventeen is on consent, we need to also withdraw eighteen. Page nineteen, we have item, item nineteen on consent, and we need to draw, withdraw items twenty and twenty-one, and page nineteen, item twenty-two is also on consent. Page twenty, we have items twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six on consent. Page twenty-one, we have items twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty on consent. Page twenty-two, we have items thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight on consent. And back to item four, we are making changes to the amount. The total should change to one million, seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and that's seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars is coming from, uh, GL count zero zero one, underscore zero zero zero, underscore zero four two six, period five four two dash zero zero one. And that's, uh, Councilman who, Smithman? Okay, account. And that's the consent agenda.
Alright, thank you. Just, would you clarify again, what was the change to item four? I don't think there's clarity on, on the date.
The amount changed to one million, seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and seven, and that seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar addition is coming from Councilor Smithman's, uh, discretionary account.
Thank you. Counselors, if there are any other items like you to add or remove? Counselor Williams? The request is to add item number thirty-nine.
Madam President, it's actually not a resolution, it's just an information purposes. There's no vote needed.
Alright, thank you. Any other items, counselors? All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial, and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation indicated with a P will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Counselors, if I can entertain a second and a mo- a motion and a second.
Second.
Alright, thank you, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Alright, thank you. Anyone that was here for an item that was listed as consent, it has been approved. We hope you have a great day, and we'll continue with the rest of our agenda. Mr. Clerk, if you'll call up item number one.
Okay, item one, uh, should reword that item, Madam President, to, uh, election of the two thousand twenty-three dash two thousand twenty-five City Council President...
Wait, excuse me?
I'm sorry? It just needs to be reworded, because it's not a resolution.
There's some discussion on the day of, what was it? Counselor Moore?
Yes, ma'am, um, I apologize, Madam President.
That's okay.
Uh, there was an item that, uh, we wanted to get pulled.
Pulled? Okay, I apologize.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Alright, the item, please.
Uh, I'll pass it over to, uh, Counselor Clark.
Yes, it's, it's item four.
Item four? Okay, item four?
Yes.
We'll take that back up then, item four. Are you pulling it from consent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, if you'll read item four.
Uh, we'll just read adopt the consent agenda, absent item four.
Pleasure to read that.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Alright, thank you.
So, it's just like we never...
Alright, so now we'll go back to the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number one.
Okay, item one, again, it should be reworded, uh, we were, actually worded the item wrong on the agenda, it should say election of the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five City Council President and President Pro Tem. That's all the changes.
Alright, at this time, counselors, I'll open the floor for nominations for the role of President. Are there any nominations? Yes, Mr. Moore?
Madam President, I would like to nominate, uh, Counselor Alexander, uh, for the position of President.
Alright, that's the nomination for Wardene Alexander for President. Are there any other nominations?
Yes, um, President, I would like to nominate Clint Woods for President.
That is...
Do you need to close the nomination? Stack up?
Okay, this time, I believe I have to call at least three times, and then we can close it.
Well, there's no necessary, how many times you call, you just give other counselors a chance to make nominations.
Perfect. Are there any other nominations? Alright, at this time, we'll close those nominations, and we'll call for the vote. Mr. Clerk, will you call for the votes?
Okay, when I call the role, please say the name of the individual you'll be voting for. Uh, Counselor Abbott?
I pass.
Counselor Clark? Counselor Moore?
Counselor Alexander?
Counselor O'Quinn?
Counselor Alexander?
Counselor Tate? Uh, Counselor Williams?
Woods?
Counselor Woods? Counselor President Pro Tem, Smithman?
Woods?
Counselor President Alexander?
Alexander.
Okay, let's go back to Counselor Abbott. Counselor Tate? Counselor Abbott?
Woods.
It's like four, four? We add four, four, Madam President, so, of course, no one wins that, so, um, we either open the nomination back up for more names, or we continue to vote.
Alright, thank you. We, are there any other nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Daryl O'Quinn.
We need a motion to reopen nominations.
Alright, is there a motion to reopen nominations?
I'd like to make a motion to reopen nominations.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, nominations are back open.
At this time, is there any other nominations? We'll open the nominations again.
Madam President?
Yes?
I'd like to nominate Daryl O'Quinn for President.
Are there any other nominations? We don't, we're going over again.
We're adding, just like new, just like it never happened.
So we have to open up the nominations again, correct? So, so far now, we only have Dr. O'Quinn?
Uh, Madam President, I would like to nominate, uh, Clint Woods for President.
Madam President, I'd like to...
Yes, Counselor Moore?
I'd like to nominate, uh, Wardene Alexander.
Alright, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Okay, at this time, we will open the nominations and...
Close?
Motion for the nominations to close.
Are we closing him now?
Yes.
Okay.
So now, Mr. Clerk, if you'll call the role.
Alright, so, again, uh, mention, uh, call the name of the individual you'll be voting for once I call your name. Counselor Member Abbott?
O'Quinn.
Counselor Member Clark? Counselor Member Moore?
Alexander.
Counselor Member O'Quinn?
O'Quinn.
Counselor Member Tate? I'm sorry. Thank you. Counselor Member Williams?
O'Quinn.
Counselor Member Woods? I'm sorry. Counselor Member Smithman, Pro Tem Smithman?
Woods.
Counselor President Alexander?
Alexander.
It only takes four, Counsel, uh, President Alexander.
Alright, thank you. At this time, our votes have been counted, and Dr. O'Quinn is named President of the twenty twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five Council. At this time, we'll have nominations, well, I guess, can I still conduct the...
He's the chair, now.
He's the chair, thank you.
Mr. Clerk, at this time, we'd like to open nominations for the position of Counsel President Pro Tem. Other nominations?
Uh, I'd like to nominate, uh, Counselor Clint Woods.
Mr. Clerk, I would like to, uh...
I'm sorry?
Am I accept the nomination?
I'm sorry?
Am I able to not accept the nomination?
What did you say?
He wants to withdraw his name from the nomination.
Yeah, I would like to decline the nomination.
Oh, he's declining the nomination? Uh, I don't, I don't, I've never seen that in the book, so I don't know. I don't know how that would work, so, uh, you can decline the nomination, okay? Okay, it, uh, so we just have Counselor Smithman right now, on the pro tem.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Alexander.
Alexander? Okay.
Any other nominations? Is there a motion to close the nomination?
Okay, nominations are closed, uh, no need for the vote on that. They're closed, so are we ready to vote?
Yes.
So, when I call, uh, your name, please, uh, announce the individual you'll be voting for again. Counselor Member Abbott?
Smithman.
Counselor Member Clark?
Alexander.
Counselor Member Moore?
Alexander.
Counselor Member O'Quinn?
Alexander.
Counselor Member Tate? Counselor Member Williams? Counselor Member Woods? Uh, Pro Tem Smithman? And Counsel, um, President, um, at Counselor Member Alexander?
Alexander.
Okay, so there's five, four.
Alright.
Five, Alexander.
Counselor Alexander is our Pro Tem.
That's it, Mr. Pick back up with the agenda.
Alright, um, Mr. Clerk, are there any other items of business?
Uh, we're on item two, Counselor President O'Quinn.
Alright.
Alright, item two, a resolution, on page two, a resolution relative to the application of, uh, I guess that's Tia Tea Shop Bar and Grill LLC for your lounge retail liquor class one license to be used at, uh, Tia Tea Shop Bar and Grill, forty-eight, forty-seven, Richard Aronson Junior Boulevard, North Birmingham, and hearing of all parties, need a motion on the item, please? Okay, item is before you?
Alright, this is a resolution relative to the application of the tea shop, bar and grill, or a lounge retail liquor class one license. Is there any discussion about? Any discussion, or? Yes. Chair of Public Safety, bear with me. Go ahead, Counselor Tate.
Sorry, Public Health. Uh, will, is the applicant present? Would you come to the podium and state your name and address for the record? The applicant.
Good morning, Counsel. Charday Giles, forty-eight, forty-seven, Richard Aronson Boulevard.
Ms. Giles, can you speak up a little bit? Can you pull the mic up a little for me, please?
Charday Giles, forty-eight, forty-seven, Richard Aronson Boulevard.
Okay. Alright, um, Counsel, this is an application for the tea shop, um, that's located at forty-eight sixty-seven Richard Aronson Junior Boulevard. The applicant presented to the Neighborhood Association, the Woodlawn Association on... Ooh, I cannot see this, the date. Can you make that up for me, Counselor Williams?
Looks like that they went on the fourteenth of, um, one month this summer to Woodlawn, they voted to support it. Uh, the Neighborhood Association voted unanimously, um, to support it without an indication of the number of votes. The Neighborhood Association needs to work on their handwriting.
Alright, Ms. Giles, can you tell the council about your establishment, um, that you're opening, your business hours, and we want to hear a little bit about your, um, public safety plan?
Oh, yes, ma'am. We will be open Monday through Saturday, Monday through Thursday, it'll be twelve to twelve, and Friday and Saturday is gonna be twelve to two.
Okay. And can you go into your public safety plan, uh, details on your safety plan?
Yes, ma'am. As far as the safety plan go, I work in the kitchen, I'm the chef, and my husband, he's oversees that by me not being able to, and we both established that we will have off-duty security, I mean, off-duty officers on the weekend and two security guards during the weekday, one in the parking lot at all times and one at the door. We also will provide valet parking as well.
Valet parking, okay, so that's the, uh, the thing that you guys had to get straightened out with zoning, zoning?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you guys have secured that lot, and you will be offering the valet service?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, making sure that you have, um, um, security inside and, uh, patrolling your lot at all times?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Alright, 'cause there was a, a concern that, you know, it was an issue with you guys in the parking, so you did get the zoning situated and...
Yes, ma'am.
And making sure that, um, you know, that, that things are, you know, safe mechanism, you know, people leaving at the venue and, and making sure that, um, you do have that security outside. I'm gonna turn it over to Counselor Williams, um, to see, does he have any questions, uh... Before I do that, Counselor, is anybody here, uh, against to support this item or against this item? Okay. Alright, Counselor Williams.
Thank you. Uh, Detective Langford, do you mind, uh, coming up? I know that this, when we, when we heard this item during public safety, um, there was, um, some level concern, of concern that, uh, I believe that, uh, Detective Langford brought up around different operational issues. I just want to hear your opinion in terms of, in your opinion, have those been addressed, and what are those? If you...
You can speak into the mic.
Uh, yes, sir, and Counsel, it's gonna be on the remote parking that they have, uh, I think it's crossed the street and a little bit down farther. They say it's gonna be valet, but, um, that's one of the issues, I think. I think it's, uh, illegal with that issue, so I don't think it's been resolved yet. Okay, we have to act zoning about that, but I don't think that has been resolved, but I think it may be on our part, whereas far as the, uh, the covenant dealing with, uh... Okay, we have to act zoning about that, but I don't think that has been resolved, but I think it may be on our part, where as far as the, uh, the covenant dealing with, uh, their parking has to be within, uh, their, their license and their safety plan. That covenant part, I don't think is, is, is within that.
Okay.
So, and that's thanks, that's what the issue is.
Uh, Chief, is there any way that we could have, uh, someone from zoning come up and, and let us know if they're in compliance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Work on that now.
And then also the safety stuff, uh, Counsel, uh, Williams, what we had was, uh, just, uh, that they're gonna have to have off-duty police officers, we hadn't had issues there before, okay? And from there, uh, just to resolve some of the issues that's been going on, we're gonna ensure that they do have officers, but I checked their location for the last couple of weeks, they was not open, okay? Even though advertisement of three weeks ago was saying that they was gonna have something going on, but, uh, they did not open. So that was gonna be the concern that we had with them, but he did abide by that and she abided by that.
Okay. Thank you for checking on that, Detective, that's, um, very helpful.
Counsel Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, so the question I had was, uh, I know that there was a business that operated, um, under the same use in this position before, um, and I'm curious as to why there wasn't anything brought up about their parking, um, and why it's, it's an issue now? Just trying to get a better understanding and clarity.
When it came to that, uh, sir, they're using a, a different location, you're using, it's not, it's not, it's, it's not the same location at that time. I think this is something that he put in his safety plan, the other person that utilized that, they didn't have that in their safety plan that they was utilizing that parking lot. If they did use it, it wasn't put, that they were using it, so from there, that made it where, it's our issue then. So from there, we're aware of it, so, you know, you can use some locations, but if you said that you're putting that in your safety plan and you're gonna cover that, then from there, that should be a part of your company.
And, and just so I'm clear, the space that you're talking about, uh, that they're proposing to use for parking is the old gas station across the street?
No, sir.
No?
They're proposing to use the, the, the location that's gonna be, uh, across the street, that's gonna be that parking area, correct, sir? Yes, it's not the gas station.
Not the gas station.
It's on the same side, though, but it's down farther.
Got you, I wanna say next door to the church, then.
Yes, sir, exactly, in between them, yes, sir.
Okay.
It's an empty lot.
Right, okay. And, and what was the issue with being able to utilize that, that space?
With that issue, then that's separate from their space.
Mm-hmm.
So from there, that mean they have to provide security over at that space also, uh, so if anything go on that, they're responsible for that and liable for everything that goes on over there, too.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And then, I think I'd like to hear from Mr. Rousler to clarify, give, give you guys a chance to clarify what, with what's been said, what you got? Any clarification or anything that you feel that's-
Yes, it's-
That we need to address.
And it was in the previous covenant that, uh, whoever it was, the people that was before us used that, it's in the covenant. Um, safety plan, it's in my safety plan that I was always gonna provide security at that lot. Uh, when I gave the tour to the city, to the Neighborhood Association, that was the lot that I showed them and it would be secure at all time. When I went before Public Safety, I told, uh, Public Safety that it will be an off-duty, duty officer on-site at all times with a security guard. For the sole purpose of life is to sit there and watch cars, so that's been addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Rousler. Chief.
Yes, so we have Ms. Katrina Thomas here, that she can ask your questions, Counsel Williams.
Good morning, Counsel, Katrina Thomas, I serve as Director of the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits. So this particular location did go to the zoning board of adjustment a few years back, it was under a different establishment, and there were some conditions associated with that approval. Um, it's a parking agreement, also the requirement for valet parking, and it's my understanding that this establishment was able to record that covenant, which is basically an agreement between the owner and himself to be able to use the, uh, the adjacent lot for parking. And so they were able to record that document.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, my question is for the city attorney, given this information and given the applicant's promise to provide valet and security at that off-site location, um, if, uh, if Birmingham Business Compliance Vice Narcotics, whoever comes out, uh, and finds that, that that is not being done, does that give us, uh, a legal standing to start proceedings to revoke their business license?
Well, we want to talk about the grounds under Alabama State Code twenty-eight-one-six in which you can grant or deny, and the Counsel is well-versed in that. But if you're talking about if they do not meet zoning requirements, then that is a problem, but based off of what Director Thomas has said, that has been clarified.
Understood, so just so, uh, the applicants know, as you guys know, we have a really hard time in Birmingham when we have off-site parking. We, we went through that for about thirty minutes at Public Safety, and, and I, and I, I really like you, which is why I'm going to support this, but I really want you to understand the problem that we have with off-site parking. And the Counsel does have an ability to revoke a business license and start those proceedings if we feel that the establishment is a threat to public safety. And if you take the proper protocol to mitigate what we see in a lot of off-site parking, then you, then, then I feel that, that you can create a safe atmosphere for, for the residents that, in the area, as well as those that come to visit your establishment. But we got some really good detectives in business compliance, and so I just want to let you guys know, it is my opinion that this is something that, that will, that will be monitored, and you, you've given your word that you're going to, to take those steps to make sure that that's secure, so we don't have the, the criminal activity in that off-site parking. And, um, I just want to make sure you understand that, you know, I'm, I'm going to support this knowing that you're going to be true to your word, but I expect that that off-site parking not cause an issue, all right?
You have my word on it, Counsel.
All right. All right, back to you.
Thank you, Counsel Williams, I'm not gonna go and, and be redundant with Counsel Williams said, uh, we do expect, um, you to adhere to your safety plan and the things that you have presented before this, this Counsel, because you guys came to Public Safety and there was some concerns and some issues there. So the goal for the city of Birmingham is to make sure that those that come before the city do what you are supposed to do and follow the city ordinance. So we, we want businesses, but we want people to have clean, sustainable, healthy business and safe business where people can come out, enjoy themselves, and make it back to, to, to their homes. And so I think Counselor Moore may have some more questions for you guys.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, first of all, I just want to say thank you to, uh, Director Thomas for providing that clarifying information. Um, I think that, number one, it's hard starting a business, right? It's hard being a business owner, um, it's hard being an entrepreneur, it's a lot that goes along with it, um, and I just want to say thank you to you all for, um, doing your part. Every, it, it sounds like everything that has been asked of you, you have done, you have followed the instructions, um, and you're really just trying to, you know, be a good faith partner, uh, in our city. Um, and I appreciate that, uh, and so I'm glad that, you know, you all did your part as well to go to the Neighborhood Association, because from what I read, it seems like the Neighborhood Association was in full support of it, um, and that they support what you all are doing. And so I expect that this will be a business that will add to the fabric of our city, uh, and provide a, a great, safe, and, you know, uh, wonderful space for folks to be able to enjoy themselves, and so, um, I just want to tell you, thank you, thank you. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Call for the vote, um, President.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, that item passes.
Thank you. Um, it was some detail left out during Public Safety that I wanted to wait until I get here. Um, as you said, the neighborhood unanimously voted for us, and you talked to them. Um, it's actually three vacant houses adjacent to that property, and I'm going to transform all of them. Uh, one of them is closer to the club, it's gonna give an atmosphere for the older crowd, like a shot house kind of thing, by me being, being a disabled vet.
Mr. Rousler, you got, you got the vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
Your item passed.
Don't, don't mess it up.
You're, you're good.
Look, I practiced in the mirror all night, I would have to say sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Jeez.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Item four, a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute for, as the act of said city in agreement for consulting services between the city of Birmingham, the Birmingham Board of Education, and IMC Financial Consulting LLC. Under which the Birmingham Board of Education and IMC will implement a financial literacy initiative called the Financial Freedom Project to provide financial literacy and financial education to Birmingham City Schools for an amount not to exceed, and again, that amount changed to one thou, one million, uh, seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a term of one year. Motion, please.
Second.
Who, who made the motion?
I have a motion, second, um, Counselor Moore and-
Thank you.
And I second it.
Item is before you.
All right. Do we have a presentation?
You can give a presentation if you want. At this time, Madam, I mean, Mr. President.
Sorry, I'm still laughing, that's a good thing. Mr. Mayor, well, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to know if we had any feedback, you know, we invested, we were really excited about investing in this program last year, and I don't know if there's any third-party evaluation or some data, some feedback to let us know, you know, how successful it was and what kind of impact it created, so that we're, you know, equally as enthusiastic about re-upping this time.
Yes, ma'am, at this time, Mr. President, it's okay with you and the Counsel, we're gonna have Mr. Isaac Cooper come up and his team, as well as Chief of Staff of the Birmingham City School System, under the Superintendent Dr. Mark Sullivan, Dr. Spencer Horn, and any of his team members as well. As they come, as you know, um, it is unfortunate that, uh, not just poverty, but concentrated poverty exists in pockets in the city of Birmingham. And we heard, um, NARAP, the organization here earlier, talking about how they want to build generational wealth. They're gonna talk about that next month in their conference here in our city. At that conference, there will probably be no children. I think one of the things we have to do in talking about building generational wealth and knocking a dent in poverty is to make investments in the next and the youngest generation. And I think in order to do that, that starts with financial literacy. And most would say financial literacy starts at home, uh, we would agree with that, however, we know, um, and acknowledge challenges exist at home. So we thought it's important, um, to support and invest in our children, as well as the school system, um, and seek an organization and persons that deal in this work every day, that can literally teach our children at all levels, K through fifth, sixth through eighth, ninth through twelve, um, about financial literacy, and so they can make better decisions for us themselves. Just a note, and then I'll give it to Mr. Cooper, um, it is my desire to put cash check in places that are predatory and prey on our citizens out of business. I'm not sure I can do that with the existing adult generation, but I do believe we can do that with the next generation. But in order to do that, we have to empower them and they need to understand what financial literacy is. With that, I give it to Mr. Cooper.
All right, good morning.
Morning.
And happy Classic Week. Uh, so on the heels of, of your comment, uh, Counsel Clark, is that I sent an email early October, maybe on October fourth, uh, that attached our annual report. And so to your point, we are very intentional when it pertains to the data that we're able to extract, but also to be able to document how well these students are learning in the classroom. Uh, a part of that, and I'll just share a, a quick overview, so there's a double-digit increase in our pre and post-test, uh, assessments at the middle and high school level. So essentially, when we walk into the classroom, what is your knowledge base when it pertains to credit, investing, budgeting, savings, identifying those national standards that's been established for financial literacy? And then by the time we leave the classroom, where are you? And so we've been able to see a ton of success based off of what they've been able to learn thus far. When it pertains to the environment that we are, again, being very intentional in supporting, sowing the seed of financial literacy within the student, we do have to make sure that we saturate that same seed in regards of the environment they occupy. So what type of workshops are we establishing for the faculty and the staff? What type of workshops are we establishing for the parents and caretakers? Uh, one of the successes, so we had over four hundred attendees, uh, one of the exciting successes is that we got close to half a million dollars of public service loan forgiveness that was executed because of our workshop, that was actually facilitated this time last year during Classic Week, because there was a deadline to get it done. And the emails that we've been able to receive from faculty and the staff to say, Isaac, thank you so much for this workshop, this just freed up three hundred dollars a month, I, I'm a single mother, so now I'm able to apply this towards different initiatives. We've, we've also been able to see through our, um, robust training, um, but the support with financial institutions. So we're all aware that there are these CRA initiatives that these banks are scrambling to try to, uh, ad, uh, address, uh, so we've been able to partner with regions and deploy the, their bankers into the classroom. One of the unique stats that we see in every class, elementary school, middle school, and high school, the first week they get into the classroom, the, the first question we ask these students, who in here knows someone that works at a bank? Literally, less than three hands every class. So now, moving forward, over that nine-week period, there is two additional bankers that they are able to establish relationships with, and to begin updating their mindset on what, what financial literacy looks like. Um, a, another aspect that we are intentional about is to make sure that we don't put too much pressure on a teacher. Faculty and staff already do enough for our next generation of leaders, we don't want to put that onus on them as we, um, facilitate this information. And so there's an additional one-on-one consultations that we provide for the faculty and the staff, so they can get right-sized with their own finances, because financial literacy isn't, let me tell you the definition of credit, let me tell you the definition of, of a stock. It's more so, let me show you how we were able to implement this concept in real life and how this applies to your, uh, um, either at the math level with elementary school, eighth grade, high school, whatever level they are when it pertains to numbers, ensuring that they have the same type of confidence they have with numbers, especially when it pertains to money. So I'll pause and see if there's any questions, uh, but there are additional assets that you'll be able to review, uh, our website, bhmfinancialfreedomproject.com, it lists our initial nine-week report. So when we got into the classroom, reproduced, it was probably about a forty-one-page document of a, of a report. Um, to your point, specifically on a third party to partner with to be able to assess our data, uh, we actually had a, a meeting with the University of Alabama, uh, a, a potential partner, again, we, we don't want to keep it binary, so we, we reached out to the University of Auburn, is, Auburn University, um, and also considering HBCUs, because when it pertains to data, we want to make sure that culturally, they understand the community that we're in, and so the quantitative assessment also is aligned with tho, those qualitative components of, really, as what was mentioned in the earlier presentation, some of, some of the history economically when it pertains to black communities, being able to understand these concepts in their household.
Counsel Clark.
So I appreciate you, you know, pointing out that you did send us some data that we can go back and look at, um, and sharing parts of that report, and, you know, considering third-party evaluation, because I think, you know, for continued investment, we're gonna need to be able to evaluate the impact. I think this is great, because I think, um, you know, a lot of our kids don't get the memo from, from their parents or grandparents, and so, uh, being able to do this in the schools creates more engagement in school, too. So I'd be curious to know if you're seeing less truancy and other outcomes as an impact, you know, cause kids can get excited about money.
That's exactly right.
And is it having, you know, some impacts of them being more engaged and more interested in investing, not just being at school because you have to?
Right, that's right.
But because you're investing in your financial future, so-
You're exactly right.
Um, make it happen for us, Isaac.
Absolutely, well, you know, Birmingham City School is amazing, the teachers are great, uh, but there is a comment that we received from a student that said, the only reason why I came to school today is because of this class.
Okay.
Right, and so, again, these students, specifically our seniors, these, these kids already, they're working with credit now, they're, they're making money, they, they're, but they don't have bank accounts. They got Cash App, they got Venmo, they got PayPal, right? So who's providing this insight to be able to help them navigate all these fintech-type of establish, establishments that are actually making money off of their ignorance? Um, cause really, that's the foundation of financial literacy. On the, the, uh, heels of your comment around data, so we made a heavy investment in the- the software that will be able to hold and report the data in that same type of, uh, framework. Uh, we've been working with consultants to make sure that, as you mentioned, that third-party partner recognizes the, the comprehensiveness of what we're doing, because it's just not a transactional, hey, we're going into the schools, out to schools. It's very comprehensive, the fact that we're dealing with the adults of these students and then as well the faculty and the staff. So it's our goal that with the evolution of the states, well, excuse me, the state policy around financial literacy, so one of the things that's been updated is that beginning school year of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, financial literacy is gonna be mandated at high school level. Now, they established the standards at, for ninth grade, but they have yet to establish it for tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. Um, actually, this week, I have a meeting with the state representative that sponsored that bill to be able to reflect, show our data, to display why Birmingham is gonna be on the front end on being able to show what the guidelines are throughout the state. And so it's our goal, to, to your point, to make sure that we have that type of infra- infrastructure, systems, operations, and the compliance to be able to scale throughout the state that started right here in Birmingham.
And Mr. President.
Yes. Council Clark.
I just have one last question about, you know, any challenges or lessons learned from, about trying to get it integrated into this class day, 'cause I know that's always a challenge. I've faced that challenge trying to do financial literacy in schools, so, you know, there's a lot of, I mean, you know, everybody wants to make sure the standards are being met. So any, any challenges or lessons learned about getting it adopted and integrated in the schools you were targeting?
Great question. Um, I'm, I'm super excited about our relationship with Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Horn, the instructional superintendents. Uh, they've been very intentional to make sure that we establish a robust relationship on the front end with the principals. So as we connect with the principals, we then, there is a point of contact at each school to identify how do we align within their current calendar, but not disrupt the core curriculum, right? So at the high school level, we're, we're during the economics and governance hour, and so we align with that particular teacher. Uh, middle school, we're at the social studies hour, and then elementary school is the math hour. So we go in one day a week, our schedule's laid out, um, and it's, it's really been excellent. We're in and out, and the teachers been able to appreciate how we're able to, uh, come in as well. Um, I'll yield and see if there's any comments Dr. Horns wants, wants to add to it, but I think that we, um, we got great counsel on the front end to make sure that, you know, there is limited, um, variance in our ability to be able to implement, and it's been, it's really been a robust relationship. Now, Dr. Horn, hopefully you'll say the same thing now. Okay.
Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Isaac, thank you for your work on, in, in this. I think that there's no, um, you know, a lot of times, our kids faces gap, face gaps, um, that, that, uh, maybe kids over the mountain don't face, and it, and it puts us as a city so far behind. And so I think that this work is very, very important. And one thing that Mayor Woodson said that, um, I think that this council would fully support, and I know you said you might not have the power to do, but Mayor, I would urge you to find the power or something, I don't know, but the, the predatory lending.
Yep.
Or, or short-term, or payday lending, whatever we wanna call it, um, is a huge problem. And it, it continues a cycle of poverty, um, to a point that is detrimental to the residents of this city. And so I, I don't know if it's in your curriculum or not.
Absolutely.
But I hope that it can be emphasized to the nth degree about, you know, I, you know, do something else, do anything else. And, and listen, every, situations are tough and pe- and, and, and things happen, but that is just something that really gets under my skin because it's predatory, it's taking advantage of people, and, and the people that it's taking advantage of, um, uh, seem to be where these shops are located, and they're located all across the city of Birmingham.
You're exactly right. Well, yes, well, I was gonna say to your point, I got all excited. Um, two things that I want, I wanna speak to. First week in the classroom, just as you mentioned, in regards of just the lack of exposure into certain communities, the first question that we actually ask our seniors is that, if you had an unlimited amount of money and an unlimited amount of time, what problem would you solve? And you would be shocked on what their lens of the problems that they want to, to solve here in the city of Birmingham, specifically in their backyard. Unfortunately, some of the answers start with, I'll get groceries for my family. It's an unlimited amount of money, right? But their mindset has been conditioned in survival mode, so we, we address that on the front end. When it pertains to some of the products that they'll have access to, and again, a, a lack of information, you're gonna go to what you're most proximate to. Um, loans one-on-one, I believe that's week three DA, if I remember correctly, and we go into the different type of financial institutions, and the last one we get into is the payday loans. And we actually have a skit, we have an activity that we act out, and when I tell you the frustration on these students face, when they learn how these products work, now their appetite to learn the information to make sure that they can avoid that product, they're bought in, they're bought in. And so it is, it's life's work for us, uh, the fact that our firm, uh, we don't stop meeting with our clients, we have one-income households, two-income households, business owners, professional athletes. So when we communicate to these students, we know what we're talking about, right? Like, this is information we're, we've been able to see implemented. Now, how do we build an infrastructure to scale with quality? Not quickly, but with quality to make sure that there is a reoccurring investment, but also we're able to produce data to the city that speaks on, all right, well, how many teachers that went through your workshop now own a home in Birmingham city limits? All right, what's the debt reduction of the, of the faculty and the staff? So, so there's certain information that's good for the local economy and the growth of communities that this information will be able to essentially change the mindset and o- over time, um, hopefully change the actions to where they'll be able to, you know, be a part of the, the financial, uh, wealth bidding, wealth building activities.
Well, thank you. And, and Mr. Mayor, if, um, there's anything that the council can do to assist you in cutting down on the predatory lending, um, let's work as a team on that because it is, I, I really feel passionate that that is something that keeps our citizens behind, and it's intentional in the way that it's, the loans are underwritten.
Yes, sir.
And thank, and thank you for.
Counsel Tate.
I, I don't have any comments with Isaac, but thank you, but I did wanna, uh, tell you that I saw a video with you and Levante Bentley.
Yes, ma'am.
King Bentley.
Yes, ma'am.
Who is my niece's brother who plays for Prime, Deion Sanders.
That's right.
So it was really good to see him come back to his homeschool J O and to talk about trust the process.
That's right.
Which is his brand.
That's right.
So I was glad to see that video of you and King Bentley, and, um, I know you're in his ear, so good to see that you are leaning into those professional athletes and those that have opportunity to go, you know, pro.
That's right.
And so I'm cheering for him to go pro.
That's right. And shout out Levante Bentley, you know, Birmingham grown. It was exciting to see the students at J O when he walked through the halls. It's like, that's Bentley, that's Bentley. And now he's in his classroom talking about financial literacy and leadership. And so we're very intentional to make sure that we keep their attention, but also we highlight some of the folks that's been able to come out of Birmingham, that's handling themselves well, and, and Bentley's continuing to do that. And so shout out to him and Coach Prominent, thank you for it.
He's doing a great job. He's a Clemson grad and working on his master.
That's exactly right.
Thank you, Isaac.
Counsel Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Isaac, good to see you, man. Um, wanna just appreciate you for what you're, you're doing. I know we, uh, see a lot of issues and problems out there, and then just appreciative of people that come along with some ambitious ideas on how to impact those, and so, um, really excited just about the program when I first heard about it. Kinda, you gotta, got a little time under your belt, so I know you can tweak it and figure out how to, uh, get even more out of it, but no, I just appreciate the willingness to kinda take on some of these bigger problems, 'cause like I said, a lot of times it's easy to, to sit back and diagnose it and, and, and define it, but getting in the mix and, uh, you know, making a change is impactful, so we just appreciate you stepping up.
Counsel Abbott.
Thank you. Um, I thought of some questions that I didn't ask at Budget and Finance, so I brought them with me today so that I could ask them. I wanted to ask, how many employees you have to implement this program in twenty city schools?
Yeah, great question. So I'm gonna explain some of the breakdown. So with the, each school, they'll, they'll have on average three to four classes. So over the school year, we'll probably be in about eighty classes. To be able to offset the employee headcount, that's where able to partner with regions. So they have those CRA initiatives, so we'll have two regions' employees within every class. In regards of our team size, we're about six in total, got a couple of interns, so we try to stay as lean as possible, keep that overhead down. Um, but the partnerships with these financial institutions and the fact that they have to go through our training, three separate modules. So before they even go into the classroom, they're already equipped with the information, be able to facilitate the information, but also to know how to connect, connect with the students. You're not walking into a classroom and walking back out and not know these students' names, right? Like, being able to sit next to a student. So there's different procedures that we've established, but in regards of the official headcount, six, um, a couple of interns added to that, and then to be able to offset the in-person instruction in the classroom, uh, the financial institutions, specifically regions, we've been able to work with.
Okay, that's good, thank you. Um, and also, I, I have to assume that the administration has a copy of your budget and will share it with us.
Sure.
You know, like, the, the million dollars.
Absolutely.
Like, that's a lot of money, and I kinda wanna know, you know, what it's, how it's being parsed out. Um, but the other question was, and this may be for the Board of Education, are we providing a hundred percent of the funding for this program, or is the Board of Education pitching in two?
Yeah, so I'll go to your first question, well, I'll go to the second question first. So the city is providing a hundred percent of the funding. Um, going back to your first question, the year-one allocation was about sixty percent, forty percent. Sixty percent towards personnel, forty percent towards software and technology. So the learning management system is a vital role when it pertains to the in-person instruction to make sure the compatibility, one with the district, but also with the, the software and the tablets that the students have. Now that we were able to make that front-end investment, that's why we're able to go from six schools to twenty, 'cause we can add that delta of forty percent to the personnel. So we'll be able to share that breakdown in regards of different positions, salary, things of that nature. Uh, more than happy to share that with you.
Okay, great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counsel Moore.
Uh, so I just wanted to, you know, congratulate you and say thank you again for the work that you're doing. Um, I follow y'all on Instagram, so I'll watch all the different posts that y'all make and some of the different things that the young people are learning. Uh, one in particular that stuck out to me is, uh, the breaking, breaking down of, of your paycheck, um, and some of the, the statements that were being made, and I just, you know, think back to, you know, me being in elementary, middle, high school, uh, wishing that I had an opportunity to have somebody to, um, educate me on finances at an early age. I think that, you know, being exposed to that type of information, obviously, you know, at an earlier age, it gives you a better opportunity to navigate, uh, this real world. Um, and that's, that's a lot of the challenge that, you know, some of our young people find themselves in.
That's right.
Reason why they end up messing with the payday lending, uh, spots or, you know, signing contracts that, you know, they, uh, didn't really know what they were signing for, um, or eventually ending up in a even worse space. Um, and so just wanted to say thank you, man, uh, because, you know, the work that you all are doing, um, is, is extremely transformational, um, and I know that it's gonna benefit them, uh, just being able to have that point of reference, so.
For Tim Alexander.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, I do want to say, uh, I'm so excited about this program. I was, uh, very happy when I saw that we do have the middle school and the high school that are currently now. Is that an add, or they've already been in the program? That's Jones Valley, and we know them.
Uh, we're adding them this year, so in addition.
Very, very good, very, very good. And I do want to thank Counselor Smithman. I know that from her district, she did support the addition of two schools, so it can be done from us as well, so thank you very much. Um, we know how important financial literacy is to our students and just how they serve themselves and as citizens, so I wanna thank you. Great to see Doctors Horn and Willis and the instructor here today. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Counsel Moore.
I just have one more thing. Uh, so I know I, I said something about this last time y'all came up, um, you know, 'cause Woodline is the Business and Finance Academy.
Talk to them.
Um, so is, is that on the list, or?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. That's all, that's all I had to make sure. Got it.
Yeah, so I had the pleasure of sitting in on the Budget Finance Committee yesterday and hearing your presentation, and one of the things that, one of the many impressive statistics that you presented, uh, at that meeting was, um, an effort that really started a year ago this week, um, with helping educators, uh, with their educational loan debt. Can you remind me what that number was? I was pretty blown away. Um, was it something like four hundred?
Four hundred and fifty-six thousand, yes, sir. So we, we partnered with the first certified student loan professional in the state of Georgia, Megan Landris McGuire, she just got married. Um, she was able to, it was actually the Thursday of the week of Classic, we were able to facilitate a workshop. It was our most, and again, it's a week of Classic, it was our most attended workshop, and it was because the common pain of the faculty and the staff is student loans. Student loans, student loans, student loans. And so it was really just ironic, great timing, that there was more legislations to be able to, to, uh, make some modifications to the PSLF, uh, application. And so literally ninety minutes during that workshop, she took them step by step, and we've been able to get emails, so it's probably more money, they just haven't told us yet. Um, so I, I anticipate it being probably a little less than about seven hundred thousand dollars in total. And so our goal is to be able to continue to work with those faculty and the staff members to help them prioritize, where am I gonna put this freed-up money, right? If it's, help them build in their credit, build their savings, things of that nature. And so we're, we're very intentional to make sure that, oh, get out of here, Siri. We're very intentional to make sure that we provide the adults with these assets, because again, we can't leave the students with this information. The, 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 the teacher and the parent has to feel comfortable at least entertaining that concept with that child, or that seed essentially being sowed on concrete. So I appreciate you calling that out, 'cause that's probably been, you know, one of the, the most moving testimonials is being able to hear how this has been able to free up some cash flow.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, for each individual that's in that situation, that's several hundred dollars a month. Um, and just, you know, think about how, um, you know, at their salary level, how huge of an impact that is, um, you know? And, and that's just one statistic out of, out of many. But for those, those folks, uh, it's a game changer for, for them, uh, in the future, so thank you. If there are no additional, uh, comments, I believe we're ready for a vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, that item passes.
All right. Next should be item fourteen, uh, which is on page seventeen, and it's just, um, a notice and not a resolution pursuant to the provisions of section two dash three dash twenty-seven of the General Code of the City of Birmingham nineteen eighty as amended. Uh, authorized the city attorney upon recommendation to pay court-ordered judgment in the matter of, um, Mallory Bimbo versus City of Birmingham and Marvin Hope. And District Court of Jefferson County hearing the case number DV two thousand twenty-one dash nine oh one, um, three ten, and authorizing the mayor, city attorney, or one of her assistants to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the payment of this judgment in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Uh, next should be item fifteen on page eighteen, a resolution appointing eleven members to the Design Review Committee, three members for terms expiring July the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, four members for terms expiring on July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, and four members for terms expiring on July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. And that's, uh, zoning committee.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. At this time, I'll turn it over to the, um, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Committee, Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we do have, we did have, like, all the members of Design Review needed to either be reappointed or some new ones appointed. So we have Christopher Swain, who is a reappointment. He is the representative of the Building Trades Industry. Swain, who is a reappointment. He is the representative of the Building Trades Industry. His term is, um, Ju-, it will go through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The next is Craig Hoskins. He is the Register Architect member of the group. His new term will go through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Ivan Holloway is a member at large. His term will go to July thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Ben Weissman is the Landscape Architect Representative. His term will, uh, end July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Brian Wolfe is a Building Trade Practitioner. He, his term will, uh, end July thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Willie Oliver is a Registered Architect. His term will go through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Abra Barnes is a resident member at large, and, um, her term will go through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Richard Mock is also a member at large. His term will go through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And Scott Burnett is a regi-, Registered Architect. His term goes through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And then we have two new appointments. Doug Hale is replacing Sheila Montgomery Mills, who resigned, and his term will go through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And Cheryl Morgan replaced Leanne McAnally and her, McAnally, and her, uh, term expires on July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And I move that those, uh, those folks be approved in their new terms.
Do you have a second?
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Alright, that item passes.
Okay, I think we're going to item thirty-nine. And that's at the end of the agenda on page twenty-three. Another notice, uh, pursuant to the provision of Section two dash three dash twenty-seven of the General Code of the City of Birmingham as amended, the Office of the City Attorney hereby gives notice to the City Council, the final judgment rendered in favor of plaintiff and Great American Assurance Company versus the City of Birmingham in the Circuit Court of Jefferson County, Alabama, Birmingham Division, case number, uh, one CV two thousand nineteen dash ninety, uh, twenty, uh, zero seven, in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Is in the intent of the Office of the City Attorney to satisfy said judgment in full with funds to come from account number, uh, one twenty-eight, uh, zero one six zero zero dash five three four dash zero one three. And that concludes our items.
Right. Um, Mr. Clark, we, we have a question about, um, this item in particular. This does not require a vote.
No, ma'am. No, sir. I'm sorry. No, sir.
Yes, it was a court order, so it's ordered by the court, so you all don't know them that. It's not settled.
Okay. Get some follow-up later. Alright, um, at this time, that, that concludes our agenda. Uh, any items of new and old business? If not, we'll, uh, move on to, um, presentations from counselors. Uh, Counselor Woods?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I guess, number one, congratulations. Uh, I look forward to your leadership. I think, um, we have a lot of things in common that we wanna accomplish and, and look forward to working as a group to do that. Um, also, I wanna thank everybody who came out to, uh, our most recent Beeler Free Cleanup. Um, appreciate the community kinda engaging in this space and, and working to kinda collectively educate, uh, cleanup, and, uh, we'll, we'll work on the enforcement part down here, so, thank you very much.
Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations, and I'm really gonna be leaning in on this council to get our, as a united front, to, uh, push, uh, public safety. Um, let that be a priority for each and every one of you. Dolomite Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight, October the twenty-fourth at six PM. They're doing conference call. You can call in at seven two oh eight four three two six six nine. The code is three seven eight nine four two six. Fountain Heights Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight. Six PM at the Fountain Heights Recreation Center, located at eleven oh one fifteenth Avenue North. Indian Ridge Neighborhood will meet on Thursday, October the twenty-sixth at five thirty, and they meet on, uh, conference call, and it's, call-in number is three one two six two six six seven nine nine. The access code is zero six eight four six four. Let's continue to keep the family of Ladarius Hilliard in your prayers and thoughts. It was such a tremendous loss to our community, and I give my heartfelt condolences during this most difficult time. Ladarius was a constituent of District Nine as well. The next public safety meeting will be held on Tuesday, November the fourteenth at one PM. Please submit agenda items by email Wednesday, November the eighth, twenty twenty-three, no later than twelve noon to the following recipients, Patrice Scott Collins at BirminghamAL.gov and Gregory dot Stanley at BirminghamAL.gov. If you have any questions or concerns, feel free to call. Contact the office at two oh five two five four twenty-three oh two. And that concludes my announcements, Mr. President, and I wish each and every one of you a happy Magic City Safe Classic Weekend. Let's keep it safe.
Counselor Woods?
Uh, thank you. I forgot one thing. Wanted to add that tomorrow, uh, October twenty-fifth, uh, from ten thirty to one thirty at, uh, Sarah Toyota on Center Point Parkway, will be, they'll be hosting the street dedication for Mr. Steve Sarah, uh, who passed away earlier this year. Uh, he was a, a real, uh, large figure in that community, participated and supported a lot of the, uh, youth groups in that area, had a, had a major heart for the YMCA and other youth, uh, groups. So, we will be, uh, honoring him, unveiling and dedicating the street that his business sits on, uh, tomorrow. So, come out, uh, they'll be having all sorts of festivities, so definitely stop by if you can.
Counsel Williams?
Thank you, sir. Uh, Creston Neighborhood will be meeting Thursday, the twenty-sixth, at six o'clock at the regular place at, uh, Hope Church, and Economic Development Tourism Committee will have its work session Tuesday, November the seventh, at eleven thirty in D and E. Um, if we get out by eleven twenty-five, we can make it, so, that's a charge to you now, Mr. President, and that's all I have.
Alright, I'll do my best. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first, I'm gonna start by congratulating the administration and really the city, the state, on this Tech Hubs designation. That is huge, uh, very competitive. I feel like, you know, being one of very few in the southeast to get the designation maybe will be, you know, really, that'll help us to bode well, uh, in the grant, um, process. So, just really excited about that for Birmingham's economic development. Um, neighborhood meetings, we've got the Bush Hills Neighborhood Meeting this evening in person at the Bush Hills Connection Complex, which is at the former Woodrow Wilson School. Uh, the meeting this time is in the community room, which is accessed off the alley. Uh, parking is limited on the backside, so I think everybody will figure it out. That's, uh, ten thirty, Fourth Terrace West. Also, Birmingham Southern College is hosting Halloween on the Hilltop from four PM to six PM on October thirty-first. Surrounding communities are invited to campus for inflatables, candy, games, and fun. All attendees are encouraged to wear their costumes. Maybe we'll still have ours on from City Council. I was thinking about that. We could dress up next week. Um, the Enslie Business Alliance is hosting a networking workshop on November fourth in the Cottons Building, located at four hundred nineteenth Street Enslie. The event topic is the importance of marketing. It starts at eleven AM and will feature Jabari Miller as the speaker. If you'd like to attend, please email, uh, Enslebeham at gmail dot com to register. Also, uh, District Eight has teamed up with Birmingham Parks and Recreation and the AG Gaston Boys and Girls Club for a trunk-or-treat. It starts at five thirty on Halloween, uh, at, uh, on Halloween Day, which is, of course, October thirty-first, at the Walter Howlett Junior Clubhouse in Five Points West behind the Crossplex. So, come out for games, food, candy, and music. And, you know, you can go to both Birmingham Southern and the AG Gaston Boys and Girls Club. Uh, Volunteer Lawyers of Birmingham, along with other partners, is hosting an expungement clinic on Friday, November third, at the Bessemer Civic Center East Ballroom, from nine AM to four PM. For more information and to register, please call two oh five two five oh five one nine eight. Also, each Thursday, we're still meeting up at the Starbucks at about eight AM or just a few minutes before to do a one and a half mile loop around the property. Uh, please join us with our partners from Freshwater Land Trust and District Eight Neighbors for a little morning exercise and good conversation. All paces are welcome. So, uh, be sure to partake of the festivities this week and have a really happy Magic City Classic Week, and we welcome all of our visitors, and we hope your team wins. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so, next Saturday, uh, the District Four Office will be hosting a partnership with Cool Green Trees, where we will be planting two hundred and fifty trees in, uh, Collegeville. Uh, so, join us at, what is that, uh, from nine to eleven thirty AM. Um, we're really excited about that. Tonight, we have the Eastern Area Framework Plan Meeting, um, that will be taking place at Woodline United Methodist Church, uh, at six PM. Uh, so, if you wanna learn more about the framework plan, uh, for the eastern side, please make sure you come and check that out. Uh, let's see, what else do we have? Also, uh, of course, there are several festivities going on. The Classic Cocktails, uh, is happening, uh, to, tonight or this evening as well, at the Birmingham Public Library from five thirty to nine PM, uh, hosted by, uh, your local Lady Wu and, uh, Jermaine Funnymaine Johnson. So, y'all, make sure y'all go and check that out as well. I feel like there's one other thing that I'm missing. Oh, just would like to say thank you, uh, to everybody that came out for the, the finale of the Safe Summer Series, uh, on Sunday. Had a really good time. It was a really good crowd. Um, appreciate Counselor Woods, again, for, you know, partnering, uh, on that event. Um, everybody had a really good time. And also, you know, just wanna say a special shout-out to McWayne Science Center as well, uh, for allowing me and MC Doc to come through, uh, and, and wrap some books to them. Uh, it was a really good event for their, um, Dropping Signs Block Party. And so, uh, just wanted to say thank you, and that is all.
Alright.
And congratulations, Mr. President.
Thank you. You guys are good at getting me out of my comfort zone. Counselor Abbott?
Well, I want to congratulate our new and not-so-new officers and, uh, and say that, you know, I feel your pain. It's hard to be an introvert and do that job, but you're gonna be fine. And, uh, I just can, I really congratulate everybody who put their name out there. You know, it's hard to do when you don't know whether you're gonna win or not. But as a veteran council member who has lost the first two elections that I ever ran in, you know, I've been there and done that, and you get over it. And, um, and, you know, it's just, you know, it's, it's part of life. So, but I congratulate y'all, and, you know, don't, don't quit putting yourself out there, because sometimes you win. And then, if you don't, you have good experience. So, the next Planning and Zoning Meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November tenth, at three thirty. Will be in Conference Rooms D and E, or Conference Room D and E. The Neighborhood Association Meeting for tonight has been canceled, so if anyone was planning on going to the Redmont Neighborhood Association Meeting, don't go. Um, the, I'm, I'm still real high on my Behem three one one, you know? We have a few little lumps in it, but by golly, it works, and I just, I can't say how much fun it is to send photographs of all of this stuff that we see out there that needs fixing and, uh, you know, be able to show folks what they're looking for so that they can find it. So, um, also, we ask residents of District Three to continue to visit our website for all of these other events that we don't have time to talk about right now, but I am interested in this, this, uh, tree planting in Collegeville. I'm a, I'm a really good tree planter. And, um, and I wanted also to, to comment on the Tech Hub. I do think that that, Carol Clark has already said something about it, so I won't elaborate, but I do think that, I do think that it is just amazing that Birmingham has gotten this, and I think it will be so good for us. And since I can't even get my iPad to do right, and I have to get help from JT over here, I'm really impressed that we're going to be a tech hub. I might learn something yet. I still don't know what my iPad was doing, talking without a turn. So, thank you.
Alright. Uh, Madam Protem?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to congratulate you on this new role, and I look forward to working with you as, um, Protem. I also want to thank Counselor Smithman for her service. Um, it was great to work with her as well during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, uh, leadership team, so thank you very much. These are the announcements for October twenty-fourth. The bulk and trash pickup is scheduled for Powdely today, so if you live in Powdely, please get your trash out there if it's not already been picked up. Tomorrow, Thursday, bulk, trash, and brush pickup is scheduled for Industrial Center and Tarpley City. On Friday, the Weenona Dragons will play at the Pat Sullivan Field on Lakeshore Parkway. They'll be playing against the John Carroll Cavaliers, and that game will start at seven PM. I do want to thank the adminis-, Mayor's Administration Team. Uh, there had been a request to block off a street in Roosevelt City that just was terribly, um, packed with, uh, people were going back there illegal dumping, and so, we appreciate you making that request. There was, the old school was there, so there was no re-, need for traffic, so we appreciate that, and, um, thank you for everything. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, just wanna start my announcements by extending, um, my sympathy, again, to the family of Ladarius Hilliard. Um, anyone who has done, you know, grassroots organizing, been involved in any capacity of community work, uh, in the city of Birmingham, uh, crossed paths with Ladarius Hilliard at one point or another, and, um, you know, I reflect back on having many conversations with him. Um, so, it's, it's a tremendous loss for the city, and, uh, again, my heart goes out to the friends and family. Um, and thank you to my colleagues for, um, putting me in a new role. Um, I will try my hardest to live up to your expectations, um, and I look forward to working with you, Madam Protem, to, to do everything that our colleagues are asking us to do. Uh, in the way of announcements, Fountain Heights Neighborhood Association, uh, will meet tonight at six PM at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. Uh, Crestwood North Neighborhood Association also meets tonight at six thirty PM at Girls Incorporated Urban Impact, and the Fourth Avenue Business District will host a Magic City Classic Tailgate Celebration on Friday, October twenty-seventh, from noon to nine PM on Sixteenth Street between Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue North. The event will feature DJ battle, a DJ battle, uh, food trucks, karaoke, and more. And finally, um, for anyone who's looking for information about the Magic City Classic, for information on game day tickets, the parade route, and the game day shuttle, please visit magiccityclassic.com. Uh, Mr. Clark, at this time, I think we have some folks who s- signed up for our speakers' list?
Yes, sir. Uh, Valerie Clark was first speaker.
My name is Valerie Clark. I wanna invite you all out to the Love Day.
Please pull the mic down.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Can you hear me now? My name is Valerie Clark. I would like to invite you all to the Love Day for the fifth little girl, Sarah Collins Rudolph. We coordinate invite you to a fundraising, celebrating for the, for Miss Sarah Collins Rudolph, the fifth little girl of the Sixteenth Street Baptist Church bummel. Sarah will be here in person on Wednesday, October the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, at the Civil Rights Committed Foot Soldiers' Headquarters, seventeen oh seven North Birmingham, Alabama, three five two oh three, from two PM to five. All proceeding, we are supporting Miss Sarah Collins. All proceeds goes to her medical bill. As you know, Miss Sarah Collins is still fighting with her medical bill, so we are the foot soldiers that's supporting her, and we asking you all to come out on tomorrow and meet her and support her. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Uh, Counselor Clark?
Hey, Ms. Clark. Just wondering, is there a way to give online if, if we can't be there in person, like a, a cash app or a, or online, a website or something? Or we could just drop a check, mail a check, maybe?
Yes.
Is there an address?
Yes, it's address, yes, at our headquarters. I'm a Civil Rights Foot Soldier, so you can, um, mail, email, seventeen oh seven Fourth Avenue, Birmingham. email, 1707 Fourth Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama, 35201. If you would like get in touch with any foot soldier, we can come and pick up your check, and if you just want to, you know, stop by and drop it off and meet it, you are welcome to.
So, how would it be made out to the?
Sarah.
Oh, to her personally?
To her person, it's Sarah Collins Rudolph.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up?
Catherine Gooden.
Good afternoon, Ms. Gooden. You have three minutes.
All right. My name is Catherine Gooden, and my, and I live at 1616 33rd Street Ensley, Birmingham, Alabama. I came to the City Council because I'm having a problem with a birthday party. I'm 79 years old, and I'm a longtime member. I mean, I'm a foot soldier. As a matter of fact, I'm, I was at the church when the Four Girls was bombed, at St. Paul United Methodist Church. And I recently just did a video for the National Board, Park Board. And so, I'm having an 80th birthday. I had already contracted to have an 80th birthday at the Ossmore Valley Community Center, 1922 Winona Oxford Road, Birmingham, Alabama, 35211. And I contracted to have my 80th birthday party on January 17, 2023, and I was not informed of any cha, that any changes had occurred. However, upon my going out to the venue on several occasions to show people who would be doing things for my birthday party, the venue, I noticed the parking area had been ren, was being renovated, and I asked the venue in September, when will this area be completed? After noticing the area had been fenced off with the chain, been fenced, that no one knew when the area would be ready for parking. And so, by October, I went again, and I asked the venue, and no one knew. So, I decided to contact, contact the Park and Recreation Board Office at Legion Field. I had then, I, I, I then asked when would the board meet, and they said it meet, met on Wednesday every other week. And I asked on that Tuesday if I could be, could come and be on the agenda and to find out about the parking area that they had, that had been closed at the venue. And they said I had to leave my name, my phone number, and be called by them, which I considered was maybe the board. And so, if I wanted to be on the agenda. And they have not called to date, so I decided that maybe I could call to the Mayor Wood, Woodfin's office and reach out to them, and maybe they would be able to help me, or ask this board, ask this council, if they would make some recommendations about this area of, of the park, parking lot being renovated. Because I had already sent my invitations out, as I told you earlier, I, I contracted this venue on, in January, the 17th, and I paid for it to, to have it there. And since that time, I found out that the parking lot is being renovated. So, I reached out to the mayor's office, and they told me that they would put me, they would schedule me to see him, and that I have not heard from them to date. So, I decided this morning that I would just get up and come up here and ask the, the council if they could make some recommendations, because my invitations are gone out, and my guests are scheduled to be coming into Birmingham within the next month, three weeks up, maybe a month, and that is the weekend before Thanksgiving. And the rooms have already been booked at, at the Marriott, which is five minutes away. Also, all my venues, I'm having a live, my children are financing the, the live entertainment, and they have already gotten the venues to do the, the decoration.
Yes, ma'am.
I need that parking bit to be done, so the parking area to be done so that my guests can get there.
Sure.
Some of, some of the guests that's coming are my age, and there are some that are on, on wheelchairs and on walkers, and some of them have artificial lamps. So, this area has a two-lane, and nobody can park.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes, sir.
Your, your time's up, but I believe that Chief Sparks, can you get with Ms. Gooden and see if we can come to some resolution on this issue?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Staff has had the discussion with Ms. Gooden, and just for the council's awareness, the issue is just limited parking. And, but we're going to work with Ms. Gooden to try to see. I know that there's an alternate venue that's been offered, but there's a concern about the distance from the current requested venue. So, we'll do a follow-up to see if we can accommodate in any way the current venue, and if not, if there's another accommodation we can provide that would be acceptable. Staff is already in communication. So, we'll handle follow-up, Ms. Gooden.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President?
Counselor Clark?
Thank you. And I just wanted to note, for Ms. Gooden's sake, that the, the Park and Recreation Board Meeting is a public meeting, and members of the public can attend those meetings, and there is a, you know, an opportunity for people to address that committee, that board, without being on the agenda. If, if that's, you know, an avenue you want to pursue, the next meeting is tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. at Legion Field. I'm not suggesting that you pursue it, but I just want you to know that that is an avenue. Anytime you have an issue with that board, they are, you know, the public is invited, is welcome to attend the meeting.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our business. Before we adjourn, I would like to thank our officers on duty and Officer Cedric Pinkert, Tevin Erby, and Emmanuel Mason. Thank you for helping to provide security here at the meeting. With that?
We're going to take that off. It's still mine. Y'all might have voted for some different leadership, but I make the motion. We adjourn.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.